Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. And before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Hensley, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we assemble here tonight, missing and holding up in prayer our colleague, Councilwoman Ward, as she attends to an urgent family medical issue right now out of town. And we offer prayers of comfort and healing to that member of her family, and prayers of strength and caring for Councilwoman Ward and all of her relatives. Lord, teach us to be generous. Teach us to serve our neighbors as they require. To give of ourselves and not to count the cost. To fight and not to heed the wounds. To toil and not to seek for rest. To labor and not to ask for reward. Except to know that we are applying our best judgment and efforts to the betterment of our community. And we pray for our neighbors who work to secure and protect our public safety, who put themselves between danger and the rest of us day and night. We are grateful for them and for all that they do to keep us safe. And for all of the unspoken intentions of those assembled here tonight, we say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, August 1st, 2022 City Council Meeting to Order. This is also available to join virtually. The link is on the city's website at JeffersonCityMo.gov, along with a call-in participation number. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Deacon?
Here.
Pittswater?
Present.
Hensley?
Present.
Kemna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Ward?
Wiseman?
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any further, uh, excuse me?
Wasn't there an item you wanted to move to the end?
Uh, yes, Mr. Councilman Spencer.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. Um, if we could move the appointment of our Director of Finance and Information Technology person to move that to closed session, since we are in closed session already. If that's okay.
Okay, so that would simply require a motion to postpone, correct, Councilor?
Uh, motion to amend the agenda placing item seven to item 20 would be an appropriate motion.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Since this refers to closed session, do we need a roll call or a voice?
No, this doesn't refer to closed session. This is moving the open session until after the closed session.
So it's going to remain an open, then, is what you're saying?
Yes. So the discussion can happen in closed session, but the
Okay.
But the
Action till after.
The action would be open.
Okay. So a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion passes. Item eight, let's see, wait a minute here, sorry. Item five, item four, let me get this right, sorry. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items, and very excited, we have something very special on the agenda tonight. We are going to recognize some Special Olympics athletes. We have several of them here with us tonight. So I would like to invite all of our Special Olympics athletes, and we have some supporters and everybody here tonight for Special Olympics, if you all would like to come to the podium. And we are so happy to have you here. We want to hear about your trip to Florida, which is very exciting. And we'll just ask that when we have you talk to us, everybody can stand around up here, that you speak into the mic, and that way, everybody can hear you at home as well. And we'll have, you can tell us a little bit about the trip, and then we'd love to have everyone introduce and maybe tell us what their favorite thing was about that experience. So, welcome.
Well, thanks for having us tonight. I kind of got to be the spokesman, I think. My name is Kurt Jaeger, and I was the head track coach in Florida. And just to give you a little background, we were in Florida from June 5th to June 12th in Orlando. And the sports that we participated in were flag football, track, basketball, golf, swimming, bocce, tennis, powerlifting, and bowling. And we had a delegation of about 125 athletes, unified partners, and staff members. We came back with a total of 71 medals, had a great time. It was a little, it was about the same temperature it is here right now. It was a little warm, but overall, it was a great trip. So I'll let these guys introduce themselves, and like you said, say something about the medals they earned or what sport they were in. Who wants to go first?
Wonderful. Congratulations.
You can put that mic down.
Yeah, that mic comes down if you need to pull it down.
Hi, I'm Abby Bax. Um, if you don't know me, people, like, okay. So (laugh) I was in swimming. Um, I love swimming. And I, my favorite part was making friends, and I got these medals for second, third, and fifth for backstroke, freestyle, and a 50, 50, 25, 50 relay.
Congratulations.
All right, my name is Derek Samothi. Um, I participated in bocce in Florida. And I mean, I absolutely had it. That's a blast. Um, just absolute awe with watching all the other athletes and being able to see their talents and mine. And it's just been absolutely amazing. I took home a bronze medal and a fifth place ribbon as well. And so, I mean, I was stoked to see that myself. The best part of us Florida, for me, was actually getting to go to the theme parks down there at the Walt Disney World and stuff. So that was a very, very exciting thing that a lot of people don't really get to do and stuff. And well, we actually got the opportunity to do that. So that was really, really something special.
That's great. Congrats.
My name is Patrick Baker. Bowling. Gold in single.
Good?
Good.
Congratulations. Great job. Congrats.
My name is Grace Foss. I played bocce ball for a very long time. And I played, uh, six, two, six, and then one is fourth. That's probably good.
Congratulations.
My name's Nicole Berkey. Um, plays bocce ball. I got first place, fourth place, and sixth place.
Wow. Congratulations.
I was just going to throw a few dates out here, because I know September 10th, we have a bocce fundraiser coming up at the Special Olympics campus. Uh, the first weekend of October, the 7th through the 9th, we have our outdoor games in town, which involves bocce, tennis, flag football, softball, and golf. And October 15th, we're having a bowling fundraiser at Strikers. So always looking for volunteers, if anybody wants to volunteer. Thanks for having us tonight. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Well, congratulations to you all. We're so proud of you. And before you leave, we're going to get a picture, but I want to get a chance to say that you all represented the capital city very well. We're proud of how you represented Jefferson City. It really means a lot that you worked so hard to achieve those medals. But I know it's even more than that, that you learned sportsmanship and just making friends, and what a great experience that was. So we're really happy that you had a chance to go. And we appreciate everyone that helps to support Special Olympics, so that our athletes can get these great experiences and compete and get all that goes with it. So, um, we're also thankful to have the Training for Life Campus here in Jefferson City. I know that it's really the only one of its kind in the nation. I know when they opened that and reopened it now, so it's really great to have it there. Does council have any questions of our athletes or anything to add? So, and I know you also have some cheerleaders in the audience, so we appreciate all of you all being here, too. I think that's really cool, and it's great to have you here. And what I'll do is invite all of you to come forward here. We'll have council come behind us, and we'll get a photo. But I also have some gold for you. I guess it's gold. It's a city coin. So it's not as great as those medals that you all are wearing and the medals that you earned. But we hope that you'll take this as a show of appreciation from the capital city and just how very proud we are, and just keep up that great attitude and work every day and continue to strive for all that you do. So congratulations, and we welcome you forward to get a picture. Thank you.
And I would like to present each of you with city coins. So glad we did that, as we do at Handshake. So very sorry about that. So congratulations. We're very proud of you. And there's one for you, and your video was awesome. I love seeing all that. Congratulations to you. Congratulations. Yes, the dancing, I think your name is Jefferson City. Congratulations for all that you do for Special Olympics. Appreciate that. And then there's a question for you. There's this. Congratulations to you.
Andrew is not here, right?
Andrew.
Give us the Andrew. That would be great. And I want to get a selfie, so don't move.
Knew that was coming.
I don't normally do selfies at council meetings, but this is kind of a unique opportunity. So is that all right to get selfie with the mayor?
Sure.
All right, cool.
He's already paid his homework.
You won't be paying him for you?
She is. Okay, we have to do a selfie?
It's a selfie. She has to do it.
Why don't we get everybody, all the family up here. We'll do one picture with family, friends, and supporters. Okay.
They don't do selfies.
Come on up. Yes. All right. Let's get everybody here, and then all the family and friends and caregivers.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you, everybody.
And item five now, we have the ARPA funds discussion. And so we'll start with Councilman Hensley to lead that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Um, I just have a few comments to make. I'm not planning to have us, uh, I'm not planning to propose any, um, any action or moves on anything during this little update. That'll come in the normal course throughout the budget. But just to address a couple items in the agenda before we get to them. First, in the Bills Introduce section, um, the first four bills have the check mark next to them that indicates that council is planning to at least entertain, um, the opportunity of suspending the rules and voting on these items tonight. Uh, that was something I requested at our last meeting, because, um, even though those items are just on, the official bills are up for the first time tonight, these are items that we've been discussing for the last several council meetings. And I thought it would really be, um, best if we could address all of the pending ARPA spending items during the same agenda and have that more or less wrapped up before we get into budget time. So, um, so that, that addresses the check marks there. Uh, item 12D, which is the $930,000 currently set for revenue loss and expense reimbursement. Uh, we've learned some things about general fund fund balance due to the diligent, excellent work of staff, mainly Mrs. Perry, um, and realized that we could address fund balance, get it back up to 17% with significantly fewer funds than are currently proposed in that bill. So I will be making a motion to split the 930 that's in there into 140 for revenue loss, expense reimbursement, and 790,000 for the, um, early stage, design stage of the High Street Viaduct, uh, project. Uh, also on that particular item, um, at our last meeting, we voted to initially approve and send for, uh, bill drafting $91,442 to fund the 4% salary increase for most employees throughout the end of this fiscal year. And we also approved the, uh, the bill that granted that salary increase. And I think there was just sort of something lost in communication. And, um, that 91,442 didn't make it into its own, um, its own bill introduced tonight, though it is the funding component that council intended for that raise through the end of the fiscal year. So my intention to address that is simply to add that amount to that same item 12D that I was just discussing and have that all, um, addressed tonight. Uh, item 13D, which is the $455,000 out of ARPA for police body and car cams. Uh, in essence, in the last several days, it's been confirmed to council, again, by, um, great work and advice by staff, that for purposes of the federal grant program in which the city currently has an application pending to provide some funding for the body cameras, we are not permitted to use federal, other federal funds as the local match. So we would not be able to use $455,000 out of ARPA to be the local match potentially for that other federal grant money. So, uh, my intention there is simply to strike, um, to strike that particular item from this and future agendas, and to commit ourselves to funding the body and car cams in the next fiscal year budget, um, out of the Public Safety Tax Fund as was originally intended. You know, our purpose here in trying to propose it through ARPA was, you know, at this point, somewhat ironically, to, um, allow for kind of a jumpstart on the funding. And as we catch up with the next fiscal year, the potential timing advantage of that has waned. So, um, I'll just strike that from tonight, from the agenda. We won't vote on that particular bill. And, um, you know, as the body cams were one of the leading, um, potential uses when the public safety tax was being, um, was being encouraged, we'll just look to use that source of funds for that purpose. Uh, I know that there might be some other, um, motions and potential amendments suggested tonight, and I'll let those, uh, the makers of those motions, um, speak for themselves. Uh, final note about the body cams, $455,000. My suggestion, my real preference at this point would be that we not rush tonight to find another use for that. I think that there is great value in holding back that portion in reserve until we have finalized in the next fiscal year's budget and see where we might need to close some holes, uh, if possible. So just holding a relatively small amount compared to the entire amount of ARPA funding in reserve, just for a little while until we, um, get a better sense of the landscape. So I hope we can complete our work on these items tonight. It's been a whole lot of time devoted throughout a whole lot of meetings by a whole lot of people. So just appreciate everyone's work on this and look forward to entertaining these items as they come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley. And is there any other council discussion before we invite members of the public to the podium to comment who have signed up for that? Councilman Lester?
So I just wanted to make a few comments. Uh, a major, as I understand it, the major objective of ARPA was to assist local governments to stabilize their budgets. They've been battered by the pandemic-induced economic downturn. Our budget is always tight. This coming year, it appears to be more challenging budget than recent years. This is partly because we are going into it with our fund balance at or just a little above the defined minimum. I'm concerned that unless we shore up our general fund, we may face, be faced with cutting back on staff or services. ARPA's funds provide us an opportunity to shore up the general fund and put us in a better position to meet these funding challenges. To me, the best way to accomplish that is to dedicate more ARPA funding to operational expenditure reimbursements to the general fund, which will take funds out of the ARPA bucket and put them into the general fund. Taking that action would provide us with maximum flexibility in the use of these funds. Once in the general fund, these dollars could be used to fund at the level required any project or item that is identified as worthy by the council. To promote the goals of strengthening our budget circumstance and allowing for us to have more flexibility in spending scarce public funds, I plan to offer a few amendments to proposed ARPA bills later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. With regard to 2022-40, the $175,000 for the Convention and Visitor Bureau, I want to just make a few points. We've discussed that at some length individually with several of you as well as a group. First of all, the $175,000 for the Convention and Visitor Bureau is to be used for marketing purposes. And as all of you are aware, the Convention and Visitor Bureau is a primary agency which promotes the city of Jefferson. And they do this through various avenues, trade shows, publications, other things as well. Um, the CVB operates with a total of six full-time staff. Of course, they have, uh, part-time tour guides at MSP, but they do quite a remarkable job of promoting the city of Jefferson with six staff. And that includes, of course, Ms. Galispy as the director. It includes Mr. Hall, who is over the various sports activities, as well as four other staff. Sheila Sanford, who takes care of the MSP tours, and then about three other staff as well. So those people have done quite a remarkable job, in my opinion, in doing what needs to be done to promote the city of Jefferson. The CVB from 2019 through 2021 has lost a substantial amount of funds due to COVID. And of course, in 2019, which actually predated the COVID, uh, through the tornado, which did extensive damage at MSP, the Convention and Visitor Bureau put in hundreds of thousands of dollars so that Housing Unit 4, A-Hall, which is the primary draw for the prison tours. And I think as of May of this year, in the month of May, they had over 5,000 visitors. So we were, that was the highest number in May that we had recorded since we started the tours back in about 2007. So to deny the CVB this $175,000, in my opinion, uh, the request would set them back even further than what they are at the present time with the money that they've lost. And I know it's been expressed that there might be some other avenues that they can go to to perhaps get some grants, so that that might help them. However, we've got to keep in mind that there are probably hundreds of cities that are going to try to get grants. And as it stands right now, the criteria as to the application that would be required for grants for the CVB, that criteria has not even been established as of yet. So when it comes time to vote on this $175,000, I know that's still a lot of money for all of us, but $175,000, I think, is very reasonable for what they're requesting. And I strongly encourage a positive vote, so that we can see that the Convention and Visitor Bureau continues to market Jefferson City in the way we would like to see it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Okay, we will open up some public discussion. We have Ronald Heron. Is Ronald here to talk about ARPA? I didn't see a notation by there. Okay, we'll come back to that one. Stephanie Johnson, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I am, I'm not here tonight to speak as the leader of the Special Learning Center, or the past leader of the Boys and Girls Club, for that matter. I'm here because I have spent my entire career working in this community and the nonprofit sector to help people. In early July, a comment was made from this body that you were unfortunately going to have to pick winners and losers. And then you proceeded to move every nonprofit that works to change the lives of people into the loser category. It was frankly offensive to all of us, staff and volunteers, who work tirelessly to change the lives of people in Jefferson City. COVID didn't make the needs go away. COVID made it worse. COVID made our jobs difficult. More people are hungry. Homelessness has gone up. There's a tremendous lack of childcare. Domestic violence is on the rise, child abuse. These things just got worse with COVID. And the government gave ARPA funds to our state, our county, and our cities to make our communities whole again. And I think it is amazing and great, as a citizen, as a lifelong resident of Jefferson City, that we are going to put the vast majority of this money into our much-needed infrastructure, and I support that wholeheartedly. But it would have meant a lot if maybe just 50 or 100,000 could have been set aside for our nonprofits, something that could have been given to five, 10, or 15 of us that are out in the field, in the trenches every day. It would have sent a message to us that our city stands behind us as we continue to fight to meet the growing needs of your citizens. There was a comment that came up about double dipping. And I can tell you, for the Special Learning Center, our ARPA funds that we got from the state have to be matched, just like Lincoln University. And yes, several nonprofits are going to ask the county, but it's my understanding that you are as well. We're not trying to cut a profit at our nonprofits. We're not trying to be greedy. We are just trying to meet the needs. Nobody knows how to spend a dollar better than your local nonprofits. And we can take a little bit and make tremendous impact with it. And if there is anything left over, I ask that you carve out just a little piece that many of us can share, so that we can continue to meet the needs and help so many in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Any questions? And Mrs. Johnson is the only one we have signed up to speak from the public on ARPA, though. Is there anyone that is here to speak that either did not sign up, perhaps? I want to make sure I didn't miss anyone, anyone online or in the audience. Okay, thank you. Any comments of council at this time? Councilman Spencer?
For full disclosure, I was the councilman that made that statement of picking winners and losers. And it was not in any way to mean offensive to the nonprofit world. Me and my family participate in a lot of nonprofits and their activities. So I am wholeheartedly, fully in and engaged in the needs and the direction and the services that a lot of nonprofits provide. It's just that when you're in this seat, you take some heat. And sometimes you have to make tough choices. And so I apologize to any of the nonprofits that might have taken my comment offensive, but that was not my intent at all. So, thank you.
Any other council discussion under Item 5? I know there's a lot of ARPA discussion coming up throughout the meeting, but want to make sure that everybody has a chance. All right, moving on to Item 6, Public Hearings, Bill 2022-30.
An ordinance designating a certain tract of land in the city of Jefferson, Missouri as a blighted area, approving the development plan for the Simonsen Redeveloped Project, approving a development agreement in connection with the development plan, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection therewith.
Mr. Moleman?
Thank you. This bill would primarily approve tax abatement to the Simonsen Redevelopment Project under Chapter 353 of the Missouri statutes. The proposed tax abatement is at a rate of 100% of future increase in taxes on real property for the next 25 years. This ordinance also declares that Simonsen School Area is a blighted area. Notice has been provided to the taxing districts of this hearing tonight as required under state law. Joining us this evening is Ms. Allen Witt of Tegatoff Development. I believe she has a presentation. Also with us tonight is Mark Spikerman with Gilmore and Bell, who is serving as bond counsel on this project. So any technical questions can be directed either to myself or Mr. Spikerman. But with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Witt.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. And I also wanted to introduce our representation, who's joining via WebEx, Katie Jenner. She's also here to help answer questions if we need to. But yes, thank you. First, I wanted to say thanks to all the city staff who've helped us get to this point. You guys have all been great to work with. And thank you, council, for listening to me here tonight. So I'm talking about Simonsen, which obviously, right over there up on the hill. So I am the Vice President of Development for Tegatoff Development. We are a development firm based out of St. Louis and Indianapolis mostly. I'm here in Jefferson City, so a great boots-on-the-ground representative for this project. We focus on developing irreplaceable buildings in irreplaceable locations and solving complex problems that come along with real estate development. Simonsen is definitely one of, qualifies as that with its history. So we're excited to tackle that and bring it back to life. Our firm has developed over 2,600 residential units in the past six years, totaling over $700 million in development value, and we have $400 million in development right now. This is just a brief portfolio of our projects. We focus almost exclusively on multifamily, a little bit of multi-use, where there'll be some commercial mixed in, but mostly multifamily. And we also, you can see on this page, there's several of our historic projects that we've done in the past. We do new construction and historic renovations. Our architect on this project is Eber Salt and Associates, and they have a very strong background in historic rehabilitation. And they also have specific experience with transforming schools into apartment buildings. So we've been very pleased working with them so far. And they're working on another project similar to this one in Wisconsin right now. So before I get into what Simonsen's going to look like, I like to show what it's been in the past. So this is from 1904. This was the first separate high school building in Jefferson City that sat on that site. This is, if you were looking at it, from Miller, just like we do today. And in 1914, they added this nice big section that you see here, that we can still see from McCarty Street. You can see on the back, that original 1904 piece was still there at that time. This is when it was actually named Ernst Simonsen High School. And then in 1938, they took down that original 1904 structure and added kind of a twin to that 1914 piece, and the gymnasium, and the connection in between them. This is what we probably are all used to seeing. When I went to school there, this is what it looked like. And then, of course, we know what it looked like after the tornado, which is, you know, very sad. And then here is what we envisioned Simonsen looking like when our project is complete. So we are so excited to bring it back after seeing that, you know, sad picture before. I think the landscaping adds a nice touch. And you can also see a slight difference right there. The main entry is getting pushed back in order to expose some of the original window openings. So that's our exterior rendering for the project. Here is a rendering of one of our loft-style units that will be in the gymnasium. So it's a two-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-story unit. We're going to do our best to restore the gymnasium floors for these units. But you can see here, they have a private staircase, a lot of natural light. We use quality finishes, like quartz countertops, tile backsplash, shaker cabinetry, and designer lighting. So that gives you a vision of what it's going to look like on the inside. This project will have 72 apartments, including 11 studios, 42 one-bedroom, one-bath flats, six one-bed, one-bath lofts, eight two-bed, two-bath flats, and five two-bed, two-bath lofts. We have 116 parking spaces, and it's going to be approximately 86,000 square feet when we're done, which is actually a little bit less than the square footage that's there now because we do plan on tearing off the locker room addition, which is the one you can see from the north side of the building right now. So that, again, is going to help us expose some original window openings. And windows are very important when you are trying to build apartments. Our timeline for construction is about 12 to 14 months, and a lease-up timeline of 10 months. Some of the amenities in our project, like I mentioned already, quartz countertops, shaker-style cabinets, stainless steel appliances, designer lighting. They will be pet-friendly. They'll have in-unit washer-dryer. They will be incorporating historic wooden built-ins, historic classroom doors. There's some corbels and chalkboards, and all of those things will be restored and incorporated into the design. For the building itself, there will be an outdoor patio for residents to be able to use, a fitness center, coffee bar, secure package receiving, indoor bike storage, additional rentable storage, a pet wash station, which is actually like a really popular amenity of ours, secure surface-level parking. So we do own the parking lot across the street, and we intend on gating that and fencing it for secure parking. There'll be some cutting-edge technology, which is something we really pride ourselves on, app-controlled access control, guest-video doorbell, and security camera coverage over the whole site. This shows you some of those features I mentioned, like the historic built-ins that will be restoring an image of the gymnasium where those tall loft-style units will be. And then the bottom-right picture, I chose that because you can kind of see the office addition, the white part of the building there, and we'll be tearing out the right side of it so that the main entrance gets pushed back, and we expose some of those original window openings. This shows you a little bit of what the finishes might look like in our amenity spaces. You know, we have nice fitness flooring, some historic-looking floors for the main corridors. And then these are proposed amenity finishes for the actual apartment. So we have concrete-looking floors. We can't do, it's kind of interesting with the historic tax credit process, you can't just pick whatever design choices you want, right? You have to pick things that will go along with the style of the building. So if the classroom didn't originally have hardwood floors, then we can't put anything back there that looks like hardwood floors. So anyways, that gives you an idea of what they look like on the inside. We have some floor plans here, I'm sure way too small for anybody to see, but just to point out where some of our amenity spaces will be, like the fitness center and the bike storage, and the storage lockers are all on the lowest level. And then on the entry level is where we'll have kind of our main lobby, offices, secure package receiving, and mailroom, coffee bar, et cetera. So that is my presentation for you guys tonight. Our Simonsen logo there, I asked the public what they thought of when they thought of Simonsen, and they thought of the school on the hill. So we tried to make our logo represent that with the building on the hill there. So thank you all for your time tonight, and we appreciate your consideration. I'm happy to answer questions if you have some.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Mrs. Witt? All right. Thank you. So, yes, Councilman Deacon?
It sounds like they're really nice upscale apartments. Is that correct?
We would consider these market-rate apartments, yep. But I...
And you assume that most of them will be rentable?
Yeah.
Okay, and you can probably turn a profit from it?
Yep.
Okay. Why are you asking the city to finance it?
Oh, it's not, it is definitely not possible without this tax abatement and the sales tax exemption on construction materials.
My biggest concern was that the building was bought after the fact. If you'd owned it originally, and then the catastrophe hit, but there's a lot of developers would have loved to have that if they knew they could get the 25 years, no tax, and then a sweet deal with the financing, no sales tax even. I have a concern with the government setting in, financing construction, especially now they're screaming that we need housing. I would think a standalone project, you would jump on it. We've had a number of housing projects with private financing. I don't remember them coming to us for any type of help. The government is not the welfare problem spicet anymore. We have to look at things as a capitalistic society, and if it stands alone, then go for it. But after the fact, I have a problem with, I can understand the tax abatement for the property tax, maybe 10 years or so, but I can't be convinced at all that the bonding should be. I think you should find your own financing on that.
And I don't know if you have a response, or Councilman Hensley has his hand up.
Thank you. Do you have any portion set aside for affordable rental rates?
We do not at this time.
None? You don't plan to?
Not at this time.
Any other questions? Okay, so with that, we'll open the public hearing process for 2022-30. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the bill? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing process, and we will take up Bill 2022-30. Is there any council discussion? Or did, Mr. Moleman, did you have something to add?
No, I'd be happy to make a few brief statements on the Chapter 100 bill, if the council so desires.
Yes.
Okay. So, and I believe that that bill also needs to be read?
I haven't read it yet.
Okay.
I apologize. I thought you had. I must have skipped that. Or wait, we did 30, right? We're doing 30. Didn't you read 30?
I read 30, but he said Chapter 100, which is the next one, 31.
Yeah, I don't have anything additional on the 353, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So are you wanting to take up, to do the public hearing for both and then vote on both bills, Mr. Moleman?
It is, it is up to your pleasure, your prerogative. I think it's probably easier just to take them in turn.
Okay. So 2022-31.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Simonsen Redevelopment Project Series 2022, in a principal amount not to exceed $25 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and improving a facility for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection therewith.
Mr. Moleman?
Thank you. This bill would authorize the issuance of $25 million in, up to $25 million in taxable industrial revenue bonds. The purpose of the revenue bonds under Chapter 100 is to provide a sales tax exemption for materials that will be purchased in order to go into the Simonsen project. The $25 million in taxable industrial revenue bonds, this is essentially a paper transaction that allows for transfer of an interest in the building during construction to be transferred to the city, and then lease payments are made by the bondholder themselves. So there's actually, it's, there's not actually a exchange of funds on that. It's more of a paper transaction to effectuate the appropriate ownership interest in order to make the sales tax exemption comply with Missouri law. But the end result is that when the developer purchases materials, that they are able to enjoy the city's sales tax exemption to, you know, make a dollar go further when purchasing those necessary materials. So once again, Mark Spikerman from Gilmore and Bell, acting as bond counsel here. And then Ms. Witt also said that Ms. Jenner online here is a development counsel for them as well, who'd be able to answer any questions. So with that, stand ready for questions.
Councilman Spencer?
So what safeguards do we have in place for timeline of construction, timeline of completion, those kinds of things?
Right. So the project itself is the safeguard. So if the project does not happen, then they are not able to enjoy the tax benefits. So it's essentially a, they don't get it if they don't do what they are supposed to do. So this isn't a typical type of industrial development deal where we would say, you need to provide X amount of jobs, or invest X amount of money in equipment or whatever, or otherwise we'll claw back if you don't do those things. The project is the incentive. And so essentially, we're saying, restore the historic building and provide housing, and then you'll be able to provide, you'll be able to enjoy the tax benefits.
Is it like the Stryker's project, is that potentially transferable to different ownership?
Yes, yes. The development incentives are transferable.
Is... Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Moleman? At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion for 2022-31. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the bill? And I know we already heard from Mrs. Witt. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion. We will take up both bills. Is there any council discussion or deliberation for either one? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this. And, you know, I know Councilman Deacon raised some issues. Have we heard from the taxing authorities? Have we got any feedback from them as to where they stand on this project?
So the only formal comment we received was back from the state, and their comment was that they had no comment. I will remind the council that this did go through the Development Incentives Task Force a few years ago now. It was at least two years ago, and this was, has been looked at and vetted by the school district. The school district has been aware of this project for many, many years now, and the county as well.
Do we have a projection of what taxes would be over that 25-year period? I know we're not collecting hardly anything on the building at this point.
Right. So it's about $125,000 a year.
Well, I know many of us have sat on these decisions. They're always very difficult for the community. And we look at projects, I mean, there could be someone comes in and if this doesn't work in a month and says, you know, we'll take it over. and says, you know, we'll take it over and we'll just do it, or it could be 10 years from now. And we've wrestled with those same type of discussions and what's appropriate for the community. I know Councilman Hensley raised a question in regard to the housing units. One of the things that impressed me when we went through it was that even though they are a little more upscale, I mean, I think you said market, a little more upscale, as people move into those, they, many of them are going to vacate places that will then become available for other members of our communities. So I think that is a positive to the project. I, I don't know how accurate it is, but one of the options was just to level the building, and it's always much cheaper to start from a vacant lot. I think historically, I did not have the privilege of going to school there, but I think historically many people, and I think you, Madam Mayor, went to school there. The historic value of that building to this community, there is a value to it. It's hard to put a number on, but there's a value to, I mean, I think you classified it as the school on the hill or the building on the hill. I mean, it's a beacon that many people see. I think it ties into projects that we're working on from downtown, even though that it is a financial commitment. You know, I'm glad that the, it appears to schools, and I'm not going to speak for them, but appears based on what our councilor indicated, that the schools are in support. Obviously, it's one of their premier buildings and part of their historic past. So I know we're going to get comments in the public, and it's, you know, that's appropriate. But I think in these kind of situations, we've got to weigh what's going to happen over the next 25 years, how it fits into our community and what we're trying to do, how we're trying to invest money. So I appreciate all the work that's been done on it. I am going to vote in support of it because I think it's an asset that I would hate to lose for our community. It's always frustrating to forego, but as I indicated, we're not getting much in tax on it. So if it was to sit there another 10 years, we would not be collecting property taxes anyways. So I think it's a valuable project. You know, I know you went for historic tax credits that delayed us, which cost them dollars because of trying to do it the right way, trying to preserve this asset for our communities. So I feel comfortable in trying to invest to make that reality for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. I'm also in support of the project as well. Any other council comments, discussion? Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, I had some initial concerns about the length of time, the 25-year period. But, but I will have to support the project because not only did I go to school there, but I think it's a win for the community, and my mother taught there for many, many years in that building. So I'd hate to see it meet with the bulldozer. So I think it's a, it's a win-win for that, for Jefferson City as a whole, and particularly for that, that side of Jefferson City.
Any other council comments, discussion, deliberation? So we'll take up first, number, Bill 30. Roll call, please.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2022-31.
I didn't know if you were going to do any additional comments.
Oh, I apologize. I should ask.
I don't have.
Was there any other, any further comments? Anyone? Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and take up then 31. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
No.
Okay, bill passes, and appreciate you all being here, Alan and Mark, and Ms. Jenner on the line as well. So, thank you. And keep us posted and updated on the progress. I know that's a question we get asked pretty often. People are very excited and ready to see something happen there, so keep us posted. So, thank you. Item seven, appointments by the mayor. This item is, has been moved to the end of the agenda. Item eight, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. There are none this evening. Item nine, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Our four standing committees are available on JeffersonCityMo.gov, the calendar with their agendas. We'll run through the four standing committees. Administration?
Looks like we have a meeting this Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. across the hall.
Okay, thank you. Finance?
Thank you. Nothing from the finance committee, but the budget committee, we will be pushing our first budget committee meeting back just about a week, I think, to allow a little bit more time for staff to finalize the budget materials after this meeting. So our first budget committee meeting will be next, next week, Thursday, August 11th, at 7:30, oh no, uh-oh, old routine.
You're taking my time.
At 5:30, right here in this room.
Awesome.
Thanks.
And then no budget meetings this week. So if anyone still has old meetings listed, please take those off for this week, because we won't be here. Public safety, Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, ma'am. Public safety, we'll be meeting on Thursday, August 25th, 7:30 a.m. in the Jefferson City Police Station Training Room.
And public works?
Yeah, just to report, and thanks to Mr. Marash and our staff, we did have a special meeting of public works on July 27th. Had a lot of discussion, which you'll see some items coming up in regard to the viaduct. Our next meeting, we're going to take that 7:30 time slot on August 27th, or August 11th at 7:30, and we'll be meeting here at 7:30 a.m.
Okay, and then I have a few announcements. I wanted to mention that National Night Out is tomorrow. Let me see, and I was going to pull up, 7:00 p.m. at First Presbyterian Church, right? And then a few others are having events too. So First Presbyterian is at 7:00, and I know that Chief Wildy submitted a list. Is there anything you want to mention on National Night Out?
No, I just wanted to remind everybody about the events, and if you do have people in your wards that want to have events later on in the month or even into September, to let us know when those are, because we understand people have busy schedules. So just keep us informed, and we'd be happy to come by.
Great. We appreciate you being very active with that in our community. So that is, kicks off tomorrow night. A few other announcements for, speaking of fundraising, I'm trying to do some fundraising for the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee. I know we had them here recently, and we have a lot of potential of things that we could be doing more for, for the crew, both on their visits here and also staying in touch with them throughout the year. So I have a small table in the hallway with some T-shirts that have been either donated or that I've purchased over the years for different events. Being mayor, you accumulate a lot of those for all the great events that happen in Jefferson City. So I'm having a sale. So by donation only, whatever you may want to give for any of those T-shirts, or if you just want to give a few dollars for USS Jefferson City, we will keep track of that here, give that to Jennifer Sekanek, my assistant in the front office, and would appreciate that. Most of them are small, so I apologize for that. But certainly, we are trying to do what we can to raise some awareness and fundraising. So for the month of August, I will be selling my collectible items, one of a kinds, right, for T-shirts out there. We are also working on potentially doing a fundraising pickleball tournament for USS Jefferson City. So that's in the very early discussion phase. But we want to, to make sure that we support the crew and the sailors throughout the year. So keep that in mind. Also, speaking of fundraising, for United Way, we always are a partner with them every year, and every council person has a pledge card at your seat. So if you would please turn those in to Jennifer in the front office, and if, if, whatever you can give, whatever you are able, please fill that out. We like to have 100% participation from council, and we've come close a few years. I know one year Steve even offered to dress up if we hit 100%, remember? So I would nominate him to go ahead and do, do that. It was, we'll think of something that Steve will agree to do if we get 100% council participation. So that's not that hard, whatever you can give. So let's strive to do that. I know that our, our city employees also strive to give participation. We appreciate that. They also had a fundraising trivia night last Thursday night at Last Flight Brewery, and, and that was a lot of fun. In fact, some of our own, I think Ryan and Britt made the newspaper that night. They were just thinking so hard, you could see the brainwaves going on trivia night. It was. But appreciate us as a city trying to raise money for United Way. So please get that filled out. That night was also one of our community bike rides, so that was great. They had a group there that's working on some bike infrastructure that met at Last Flight prior to the bike ride, and then we had a 12-mile ride after that. So that was fun. Also, last week was the fair, and that was probably the best fair weather that's ever been. I would say Councilwoman Wiseman is part of the J.C.'s, so that was a success, right?
Yes, it was a fantastic week. Lots of people out, lots of great events and fantastic weather.
Well, I know that's always a well-loved event, and I think it was probably the most people I've ever seen going out there. And a couple of events coming up is this Friday, August 5th, is the Firefighters Local 671 Golf Tournament. Now's your chance. If you haven't sponsored, please give them a check. They use that money for scholarships for people that want to go into public safety. So every dollar that they raise is important. So please see Mr. Noah or any firefighter, I'm sure, for that. And then also, Guns and Hoses Hockey is Saturday, August 27th at the Ice Arena. Tickets are on sale, or you can sponsor a player. And sponsorships are selling out, but please give. That all goes to Safety Net. And later, we might ask you if you're Team Guns or Team Hoses, but I'll wait for another meeting, right, Chief in Chief? We'll, we'll give you some time to think about that. Also, tomorrow is Election Day, so please remember to vote. Any other announcements from council, Councilman Fitzwater?
I was just going to note that if we get involved in a bocce tournament, I want first pick from our guest from earlier.
That is true.
Sounds like we have some bocce stars in this city.
I think we, we can. We will definitely invite them to participate, show us how it's done, so. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. Mr. Ronald Heron, is Ronald here? Signed up earlier. And Mr. Alan Tatman from Patty Malone's has an item on the consent. So we would welcome you to the podium. We also have Merrily with us. Welcome.
I want to thank you all, Your Honor, council members, staff, friends. We've got a project going on over at the old saloon, 700 West Main. This is probably the biggest investment in that property since 1892, when they added the western half of the building and the third floor. I'm not, not sure if you're aware of the history of the building, but the, the, the box that holds the bar room was built in 1863, and it was built upon a foundation that was laid in 1836. There was a wooden building there before. Anyway, what you guys have to look over is an easement on a right-of-way for an ADA accessible ramp. We are building, we've knocked everything off of the back of the building that was built in the 20th century, and we are going to be replacing it with state-of-the-art construction. ADA accessible toilets, two of them on the back. We're expanding our kitchen, and we're going to have an outside dining, seating area, dining area, and a ADA-compliant safe ramp to replace the wooden one that was there that was already on the sidewalk. Besides that, we're also going, we're fixing the roof, replacing the windows and gutters. Masonery is all getting a new treatment, new sealant, and everything's going to be brought up to, to where it should be fixed. There's some minor structural things downstairs in the basement that have to be taken care of. And we're getting some flooring, some ceiling in some of the rooms. The kitchen's going to be expanded, like I said. Paint, polish, and clean up the brass, and a few things like that. Otherwise, the, you're feeling, the feel of the pub inside is not going to change a whole lot. And what I ask of you tonight is, humbly, I ask of you, my wife Merrily along with you, this is a big deal for us. It's our slowest time of the year right now, August through September. This is a great time for us to try to get this project finished up, because we hit October, that's when we start making our bones. And this is especially good for our, our, our staff. We have 15 employees, of which six are full-time. And we are probably one of the few restaurants, if not the only one, in town that pays all of our people a starting wage at minimum wage, if not higher. And we pool tips between the front of the house and the kitchen. And we also offer health insurance for our full-time employees. This, so it's important for us to get this done, and so we're up and ready to go come October. So I humbly ask that you take this into consideration. I thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate this. If there is any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
Not really questions, just a comment. Appreciate you making that investment in beautifying your business and it's a picture in this community, so.
We're, we're very proud to do it. I, I don't know how many of you know, before I bought the pub 22 years ago, or the business, we bought the building in 2003. I was the director of the National Register of Historic Places for the state of Missouri under the Carnehan administration with the State Historic Preservation Office for two years. And so, we put, when, the building wasn't on the National Register when we bought it, and we, we got it placed on the National Register. And it's also a City of Jefferson landmark. So we're very proud that we're able to keep it going, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just can't wait to see the finished product.
Yes, agreed.
And the Guinness will stay the same, so. All right, anybody else? Thank you. Thank you again.
Well, good luck with that, and thank you again for what you're doing. You could have brought us some potato skins with loaded, you know, and maybe a beverage, but that's okay.
Well, we're closed on Mondays, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Next time. We will certainly celebrate the finished product, so, thank you. And then Angela Hirsch, but I think we're going to wait and have you come up later when we get on that item for questions. So, item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, so congratulations, Mr. Tatman.
Thank you all, very, very much.
Thank you. Bill's introduced, item 12, number 40, 2022-40.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This item would authorize $175,000 of the city's American Rescue Plan funds for the Convention and Visitors Bureau lost revenue.
Councilman Schreiber, did you, well, I know you made some comments earlier. I know you wanted to comment. Okay, and there is a check mark by this with, if there would be a request to suspend the rules this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Hensley?
I request that we suspend the rules in order to have this bill second and third read and voted on this evening.
Okay, any objections? Hearing none, we'll take up 2022-40.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Any council discussion, deliberation? Councilman Lester?
So yes, I, I agree with the previous comments by Councilman Schreiber. I fully support the full funding for the lost revenue to Convention and Visitors Bureau. But I think doing it a little bit differently would be better. My understanding is, is that the final rules for the state's Department of Economic Development, ARPA funds for tourism, should be completed this month. And so I would, I would propose to amend that, to fund 75,000 of this now, so that there is money that the CBP could use immediately for promotion and marketing. But then we see what the state does, and if there's money from the state for the rest of it, fine. If not, then we can fund the rest of it, is what I would propose.
Okay, so any other... Okay, so any other question, or discussion on that item, or the potential, so is that a motion to amend that, Councilman?
So it is a motion to amend.
Okay, so is there a second, or any discussion? Okay, I don't hear a second, so I think we go back to the original. And any further discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes, and also thank you to Director Gillespie for being here, and also we have the Chair of the Convention and Visitors Bureau Committee, so thank you both for being here. We appreciate it tonight. Kevin, so thank you. And number 202241.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This would authorize $150,000 of the city's American Rescue Plan funds for downtown beautification planter matching funds.
And this one has a checkmark. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I request that we suspend the rules in order to have this bill second and third read and voted on this evening.
Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll take up 202241.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Any council discussion deliberation? Councilman Lester?
So yes, I, I don't plan to vote to approve this funding for ARPA for beautification downtown. It's hard to argue against beautification. I certainly want to see downtown more beautiful, but I, I don't know who the sponsor is of this. To me, it doesn't appear to be, there's any organizational sponsor. I thought Downtown Association might be the sponsor, but in checking with the President, they are not. So I don't know who the sponsor is, other than maybe just an individual, which seems unusual. I also don't know what the plan is. I heard last meeting some ideas about doing some things, but they're really, as far as I could tell, not, there wasn't a specific plan. So again, I don't, I can't see us voting on something that doesn't, doesn't have a clear organizational sponsor or, or a specific plan. I just don't think that's appropriate way to do city business or to allocate public funds, so I will be voting no.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Lester. Any other, Councilman Deacon?
I have to agree with Councilman Lester. I thought when they, when the gentleman came as an individual, he wasn't representing anyone. He said he was a part of an organization, but no, he didn't have any real clear-cut plan either, and I'd like to see where that $150,000 is going first. We can always come back, but right now, I'm, I agree with Councilman Lester.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to respond a little bit that, first of all, it, it's not an organization. It's not a downtown association. What it is, is it's a matching funds for, so somebody's gonna fundraise and hopefully raise up to $150,000. Clearly, if they only raise $40,000, we will only match $40,000, and it is for the beautification of downtown. So obviously, you know, we can't put the cart before the horse, and we have to raise the funds before we can go ahead and, and beautify the downtown and figure out exactly what those things are gonna be. But I think the general plan is to utilize it for the planners, and I believe Councilman Deacon brought up the, the portions where the trees are bare, and so that was something that I believe was discussed at the last meeting. And so I, I think, you know, the dollars are gonna be spread as far as we can, and it's gonna be a fundraising push, and hopefully we'll be able to do something great with them.
Any other, thank you, Councilwoman, any other comments deliberation? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Wiseman? Aye.
Deacon?
No.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. 202242.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize $150,000 of the city's American Rescue Plan funds for organizational review study costs set aside.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I request that we suspend the rules in order to have this bill second and third read and voted on this evening.
Any objections? All right, 202242.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Any council discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Wiseman? Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes. 202243.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to propose an amendment to this bill that would change the amount and uses currently stated in the bill in the following ways. Out of the $930,000 currently in the bill, I would like to allocate $140,000 of it to the expense reimbursement revenue loss use specifically towards software licensing and maintenance costs. And then $790,000 towards the initial design and planning phase of the High Street Viaduct Improvement Project. And I would like to add $91,442 and 39 cents to the, to this bill in order to cover the 4% salary increases approved by this council during our last meeting, but not, without a specific funding source at that point, but to pay for the rest of this fiscal year's salary increase in that bill with, with this $91,442.
Second?
Okay, we've had a motion and second to amend. Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilman Spencer?
Just for clarification's sake, the software and license maintenance, is that a yearly agreement, or is that a multi-year agreement?
Those are some annual costs that vary on an annual basis.
And is that, what department is that mainly, is that for finance, or?
It's information technology, software costs that they pay that could be associated with citywide software functions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just want to speak very briefly, just to thank my, my council colleague. We had a very spirited discussion on the 27th, as I indicated. I think there's been a lot of discussion in the community concerned. I mean, we've been talking about the Viaduct for a long time. There was a lot of support for beginning the design phase. I mean, they obviously will not spend the dollars until we get to the point where we need to. Our fear was, we do not want to get to a point where someday, five years, 10 years, one year from now, we need to do something with that, and not having started the process. So I appreciate the opportunity. You know, there was a question raised, well, why don't we use sales tax? This is gonna be a sales tax project. We had set aside, and you know, our partners at the county have been very good to work with us, $5 million. I mean, we're looking at a 12, 15, 18 million dollar project, so we're pre-funding some of the dollars if this goes through to get that design phase, but it's dollars we would have to spend on the other side, once we get to the point where, whatever we need to do with that Viaduct, whatever the professionals tell us. So, you know, I appreciate the work that has gone in, and I would encourage everybody to support this amendment.
Any other discussion on the amendment? So we'll take, we'll just do a voice vote to accept the amendment, then we'll take up the bill as amendment. So all in favor of accepting the amendment, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So now we'll take up 2022, Councilman, Councilman Hensley, or 202243 as amended. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would request that we suspend the rules in order to have this bill as amended, second and third read and voted on this evening.
Any objections? All right, 202243.
Roll call.
Oh, wait, Noah, we're, this is second. Have you, did you read it twice already?
Oh, no.
I know. It's kind of becoming a blur as we're doing some of those, but, okay.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
So we'll take up 43 as amended. Any further discussion deliberation? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Wiseman? Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes. And now I know we're moving on to a few other things. There's more ARPA later in the schedule, but I did want to mention, I know we also have Todd from Bartlett and West here, which is our engineer for the High Street Viaduct. I know it's not necessarily on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure I didn't miss an opportunity that if there was any council questions or anything, or if you're mainly just here for observation purposes.
If they manage questions, I'm happy to speak.
Okay, so I know it's not necessarily an agenda item, but I know that you were at the Public Works Meeting last week as well. Bartlett and West has been there, and we've had, there's been a lot of, as you mentioned, spirited, as Councilman Fitzwater said, spirited discussion and suggestions, but certainly if people may be aware that the engineering firm that is working on that now as well, that, so we appreciate you being here, and I don't know if there's anything to add, but just wanted to make sure you were recognized in case you had anything. Okay, thank you for being here. 202244.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the year 2022.
Mrs. Perry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. State statute requires that cities establish their property tax rates on an annual basis. The proposed FY 2023 budget has been prepared based on a property tax rate of 46 cents for the general fund rate, and 9.61 cents for the fireman's retirement rate, for a total rate of 55.61 cents. The public hearing for this will be held on August 15th at the City Council Meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Perry? Councilman Spencer?
Yes, if, if, if there was some entertainment of lowering the property tax rate, is it both that would get lowered, or is it, can just one part of the property tax rate be lowered?
At this point, we have not received the paperwork from the State's office to see what the ceiling could drop to, so I would say there's the potential for both, but until we receive those documents, I can't say for certain exactly how much that would be.
And I was alluding to my next question. So when, when do we think we might receive that information?
We have to have everything submitted by August 1st, so I would, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was getting a little nervous there.
September 1st, so we should be seeing that at any time.
Okay, and that, that could be just forwarded to the council as a little prelude before our next council meeting, if it arrives before?
If it arrives before, then yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? 202245.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri providing for the levy of grocery receipt utility tax and continuing and re-adopting the rate of taxation for the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the year 2022 through 2023.
Mrs. Perry?
City Code Section 17207 requires the city to review their gross receipts utility tax or grunt rate on an annual basis. The proposed FY 2023 budget has been prepared based on a gross receipt utility tax rate of 6% for those engaged in the business of selling and distributing natural gas, manufactured gas, steam, electricity, or both gas and electricity, and 7% for those engaged in the business of furnishing telephone service or telecommunications service. This is the same rate as the current fiscal year, and the public hearing for this will also be on August 15th at the council meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
Same question, as well as if we wanted to propose lowering those rates, how, how does, do you get any information on that?
So that's council's prerogative. Several years ago, we had discussions about raising and lowering, so that is a discussion that we could have at the council level and can be voted on by the council.
Not, not state-dependent on any information or?
Correct, just city statute.
Thank you.
Any other questions? 202246.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 0.05 acres of land addressed as 203 East Dunkland Street from C2 General Commercial to MU1 Mixed Use.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a clerk mentioned, this is a rezoning from our general commercial, C2, to MU1. The purpose is to slightly change the use. Let me first show you where that's at. Right down here on Dunkland Street, basically the corner of Dunkland and Madison's, behind the Central Bank sign. You see it right there. It's kind of hard to tell, because the roof is basically the same reflective color as the parking lot. The zoning around the area, like I said, this is going to MU1. That's a new district, a newer district for the city. Capitol Avenue area is that. So the, the property owner also referred to the Future Land Use Plan, which says a whole area there, and sort of that gray center mixed use is identified as actually ultimately being a mixed use. Let me just go to the next slide real quick and jump around. Excuse me. That's the property right there. The reason they want to rezone this is to actually have the, both of the units, it's about 1,700 square foot building. It's the one on the left there, 850 on each floor. They, they want to make it apartments. The C2 zoning has requirement of a commercial storefront on the street side, so if they were to use the bottom as commercial and want to use the top as apartments, that, that, that's a whole building code issue. They also have been in the area for about 20 years, and, and they own the building to the right there. They've been leasing it out as residential, had very good experience in terms of occupancy rate on the commercial side of that building there. Not so much so. They think they can serve the community better and themselves if that building was made to be able to allow residential to one-bedroom apartments, which is what mixed use one would allow. That's the future land use that has been adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions and go from there. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, 202247.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri relating to its finance disclosure policy and conflict of interest.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. State law requires that the city re-adopt its regulations regarding its financial disclosure policy and conflicts of interest policy. The statute is Section 105, 457, so this is a re-adoption of the current ordinances on these matters as required by state law. Happy to answer your questions.
Any questions? All right, 202248.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way of Atchison Court.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Clerk indicated this would be a vacation of Atchison Court, which basically serves as a driveway into Lincoln University property currently. The item was taken up at Public Works and Planning and recommended for, forward to the council.
Any questions? 202249.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Environmental Quality Commission members section to reduce the number of members.
And Mr. Mollman, I know we have Amy Schrader here. Should I turn it over to her?
That would be great.
All right, Mrs. Schrader.
Thank you. This bill would amend Section 12 of Chapter 7, Article 2, reducing the composition of an environmental quality commission from nine members to seven members. Since about August 2021, we've had six meetings scheduled, and half of those have been canceled ultimately due to lack of quorum. Discussion's always healthy. That's, that's the one barrier to, to holding meetings. We've had success with a similar ordinance for Cultural Arts Commission that was placed a couple of years ago.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
You still feel comfortable there's plenty of opportunities going to the commission? So, I know we had talked about probably informally of maybe merging it with another commission or looking at rewriting, but you feel comfortable there's still enough business to go to them?
We've had that discussion with the members and, um, between planning and protective services and public works, uh, between staff as well as EQC members, uh, they feel confident that, uh, there is enough discussion to support that commission separately.
Thank you. Any other questions? Twenty twenty-two fifty.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the city code pertaining to parking time, fees, and penalties.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Uh, this ordinance, as clerk indicated, would change some, uh, parking time limits and fees in the downtown area. It's, uh, concentrated along Capitol Avenue from basically the State Capitol to Adams Street, but it also includes one hundred block of Jefferson and Madison Streets. The, uh, proposal is to, uh, make those spaces. I believe the, we have in the bill summary about a hundred and forty-five spaces, uh, one dollar per hour, uh, as the fee and, and allow for up to ten-hour parking there. Of course, you could park for one hour or some fraction thereof, but the, um, uh, currently that area is mostly two-hour parking. There's a little bit of thirty-minute parking, some four-hour parking, and some ten-hour parking. So, it's kind of a, it's a variety of, uh, time lim, time limits. And currently, the, the ra, the rates range from about a quarter an hour to fifty cents an hour. Now, this all grew out of the, uh, notion that we would like to try to explore, uh, having a pay-by-app system on our parking meters. So, the parking meter would still be there, although there would be an app that's an add-on to our, um, to our software currently. And so, that, that's a no-cost contract and so that would, that would also happen as a result of pushing this through. And then, uh, we have had some comments, uh, about the changes. Well, one, we have, I think, one letter in the packet, uh, in the two hundred block. It, it made the timeframe to get in the packet, but, uh, since then, I've noticed even this evening, I've got some emails about it while I'm sitting here. Uh, mostly in the three hundred block, I think there's a law firm and several folks that attend the, uh, you know, I met this church there, uh, have some comment about it. So, again, this is just introduced and we can look at those and move forward, uh, in appropriate manner. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, appreciate the work that Mr. Marash and staff has done on it. As he indicated, it did come as discussion item out of Public Works trying to address comments that we continuously get from, more from visitors coming into the community and around the Capitol area and to look at our entire parking package. There have been some spirited comments and that's what we want. I mean, we want to have a serious conversation on this. I would like, i-if it's appropriate, maybe to add this to our agenda for the eleventh. So, if anybody wants to come in and talk to us about it at Public Works, I mean, I, that's what the process is for, to lay ideas out there and have the public come in and, and talk to us about it. So, I appreciate everybody. I've gotten a few of them. I know there's a packet of comments here and, I mean, I've heard from a few others, so, I mean, that's what we're trying to do. Balance the needs of our community as we look at our parking garage, as we kind of monitor what the state's going to do with the Capitol complex, what we may do downtown and try to be responsive with people saying you need to create more parking. So, I appreciate the comments and we'll add it to the agenda for the eleventh and invite anybody that would like to come in and talk to us and we'll talk, we'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? I think that does make sense because typically the long-term is where we put people that in the garage for all day. Ten-hour typically needs to be more in the garage. The on-street is more of the higher turnover. So, this is a bit counterintuitive by extending that on-street. So, I can see why there would be some concerns. Item twenty twenty-two fifty-one.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri temporarily waiving the requirement for city council approval for grant applications that require twenty-five thousand dollars or more of city matching funds.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. Um, so, in the current environment, um, where there is quite a bit of, uh, uh, federal grant money and state grant money, we are often as staff finding ourselves in a situation where the, the grant requirements, uh, have some fairly quick turnaround for staff to make applications. And, and, and currently, the city code requires that for any grant that requires, uh, city matching of, uh, of, of more than twenty-five thousand dollars, the city staff is required to come to the city council for permission to, uh, make application for that grant. And, and so, um, uh, as staff, we, we found ourselves in, it's pretty tight timeframes in order to, uh, turn around these grant applications. And so, what's essentially been proposed is a pilot project, um, for, uh, the requirement that city council, uh, approval, uh, prior to grant application, uh, be waived for the next six months. Um, this would allow city staff to, uh, to apply for grants, uh, without coming to the city council. Um, and then the city council would have ultimate authority to, uh, approve acceptance of the grant if the grant were, uh, were granted, uh, to the city, awarded to the city. And so, uh, w-we thought, uh, that this might be a good opportunity given, uh, the kind of state of grant world right now where we're having lots of opportunities and some pretty tight timeframes, um, sometimes even unrealistic timeframes, we, we think, uh, to, to, uh, be more competitive on the grant basis and see if this is something, uh, that can work, um, you know, going forward.
Any questions? Councilman Lester?
So, if this is approved, uh, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, council would be notified of each of those where we put in application?
I, I, I think that would be a good idea. So, it's not formalized in here. Uh, the rule's pretty simple. You have to ask for city council permission before you apply. And so, the way I put it to the, uh, the Finance Committee is, um, the, the, the less formal approval, um, that is required, the more informal notices need to go out. So, I think that the departments individually need to do increased communication with the city council of, okay, here's what's the plan, here's what's in the hopper. Um, you know, we expect action on this, we want to apply for that. So, I, that's kind of the way I see it, is that there needs to be more, um, you know, less agenda-based notice and more kind of open communication to let, uh, the council know of what the grant plans are.
Any other questions? Mr. Sanders?
I would just like to add that, um, due to the grant scenario or environment we are in, um, that is one reason at the Public Works and Planning Committee, we now do a standing item of where we are in the grant process. Uh, we originally started that where we are after we've awarded them, but certainly we will mention them as soon as we know that we are pursuing them to the appropriate committee so that, and send an email out to everybody else. That's my intention.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Um, bill's pending. We've already taken up number thirty and thirty-one, uh, twenty twenty-two thirty-two.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY twenty twenty-two budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize five hundred thousand dollars of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funds to Lincoln University for the Health Science and Crisis Center project.
Any council discussion? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I was, I was really hoping our good friend, Dr. Mosley, would be here so we could grill him a little bit. This is amazing project for our city. I'm wholeheartedly in support of it. I would like to reserve the opportunity to grill him at some point on some issue, but I would encourage everybody to support this. This is going to be a great asset to our city, for our university, and it's, it's well-received. And I think they're beginning the process of getting their matching funds, so this is going to be a great project. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, just echo Councilman Fitzwater's comments, but also to say, you know, um, Lincoln University is really stepping up to meet the challenge of future healthcare needs in, in our community and, and to really train and develop the next, uh, generation of, of nurses. And, uh, so, uh, I think it's, uh, a real asset to our community, especially with our two-hospital system that we, uh, have here in the capital city, so.
Yes.
I did see in a, a notice from St. Louis, there is a nursing school in St. Louis that is closing down because of funding. The, the need for nurses in our state, in our country is tremendous and I appreciate them stepping up and adding this valuable asset. In addition, there's going to be other provisions within this building, so it's not just a nursing facility, but we're going to have other public safety opportunities there. So, it is a critical need and I'm glad that we're able to play a small part.
Thank you. Any further comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward? Weisman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty twenty-two thirty-four.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY twenty twenty-two budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funds for grant match police department body and car cameras.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, earlier in the meeting, uh, it's been confirmed to us now that, um, we would not be able to use these funds as the local match, uh, for the, uh, federal grant that the city is currently applying for, for these body cameras. And we certainly want to, would, would not want to imperil, uh, our potential ability to receive those, uh, those grant funds. Um, so I would like to, uh, have this bill struck from this agenda and, and future agendas and, and have no action, uh, taken on it.
So, do we just need at that request or does that need to be a motion? What, what do you need or what do we need?
I think the appropriate motion would be a motion to withdraw, uh, the, the bill from the agenda.
Okay, I move, I move that I withdraw. Okay, uh, huh, oh, uh, motion to withdraw, uh, this bill from the agenda.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty twenty-two thirty-five.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY twenty twenty-two budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize two hundred thousand dollars of the city's American Rescue Plan funds for police station elevator replacement.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, I would encourage that we, uh, that we pass this because we know on the Public Safety Committee and those people that have been there and we've, uh, been shown the condition of the elevator and it certainly is in dire need of an upgrade. So, this is money well spent.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward? Weisman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty twenty-two thirty-six.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY twenty twenty-two budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize a million dollars of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Missouri State Penitentiary Redevelopment Project.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward? Weisman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty twenty-two thirty-seven.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY twenty twenty-two budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize use of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funds for the city infrastructure capital projects.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Weisman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Bill passes. Twenty twenty-two thirty-eight.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY twenty twenty-two budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize one million, six hundred thousand dollars of the city's American Rescue Plac, Plan Act funds for the Hyde Park Burn Building.
Any discussion, questions? Councilman Spencer?
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment to pull six hundred thousand dollars from this project and to reallocate that to three hundred thousand dollars to the High Street Viaduct, two hundred thousand dollars to a new private storm water program, and a hundred thousand dollars to, to, uh, demolitions program.
Second.
So, there's a motion and second to amend? So, uh, we'll take a vote on amending and then take, uh, the bill as amended? Right?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Hensley, or let's, uh, roll, how about, um, all in favors, let, or vote on the amendment and then take it up as amended?
Uh, my comment would be on, on the proposed amendment.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I, I support Councilman Spencer's, uh, proposal here and just want to make it very clear that, you know, the, this burn building project has been a longstanding priority, um, for public safety in this community, um, since before I joined the council. Uh, and, you know, I've been here for a little while now. So, um, what I want to make very clear though, at least from my perspective, is that the million dollars, um, that I hope we approve here in, in just a few minutes, it's certainly less than the one point nine or so that we started with as a proposal. Uh, but I don't view this as the end at all for this project. I, I view it, uh, rather as, as the, um, a really bright first step for actually accomplishing this. Um, I, I view this as a, a down payment on, um, what we will, uh, eventually fund in the future, which I'm sure will be a, a, a first-in-class facility that, uh, is, is great for our local, uh, public safety, but, and also serves as, uh, a great resource regionally. So, I'm excited about this project, uh, and, uh, am personally committed to, um, fully funding the, uh, the, the final plan that comes, um, for this project with this million dollars as, uh, as a basis. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, my, my comments are to the amendment also, and I echo everything Councilman Hensley said in regard to the burn building. I think there's a passion that this project moved forward and we will, I mean, I, I will commit myself to continue to work on it. But I do support the, the amendment made by Councilman Spencer. I just wanted to put a little context to, to the items. I've sat on the Public Works Committee since I've been on council. One of the frustrating things we've had is individuals coming to us wanting us to try to address storm water issues that are on their property but relate to city water or, you know, in our context, city infrastructure. Our staff does an amazing job of dealing with a lot of these issues before we even know about it. I mean, they just take care of it because it falls within their purview. But there are some that fall in that gray area between what they have the ability to do for individuals and what our more formal structure does. So, we have talked at, at the Public Works Committee for a number of meetings and we, usually at each meeting have someone come in with a unique issue and our, our staff has done a great job of bringing a proposed method of addressing some of the storm water issues that would require some investment from the city, but would also require some investment from the homeowner. So, it's a joint project where both people benefit, but it at least shows our commitment to trying to address these. So, I appreciate Councilman Spencer putting two hundred thousand dollars into that fund. It's not going to be anywhere near enough as we get into it, but at least shows what we're trying to do at Public Works and on his council. Man, I'm very impressed with the work that the council has done in trying to s-say we're going to quit kicking issues down the road. We're going to start addressing issues and respond to the communities. So, two hundred thousand of it is to help us fund some of those. And again, it's not going to meet all of the needs of our community, but it is a beginning process. The second is to continue on a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars into some homes that are going to need to be knocked over. Again, professionals are going to have to tell us when that happens. We've worked very closely with historic, but we know we've got some properties, but we don't have the funding and they fall outside of what we did in the Capitol Avenue project. So, it's to put some additional funding to enable us to be able to respond to what the needs of, of the city are. And then the final to just kind of beef up that viaduct project. Again, there won't be any dollars. And then the final to just kind of beef up that viaduct project. Again, there won't be any dollars spent there unless it moves us in that direction. But we know at some point we've inherited this, this issue and we're going to begin the, the process. And again, our staff has done a great job of, of working and getting us in this position. So, I mean, I appreciate the amendment. I would encourage everybody to support the amendment. And then the final bill so that we can provide the initial funding for the burn facility.
Okay, thank you. And I have a few questions that might be for staff on this particular item as well, on the burn building. And, and I appreciate Councilman Spencer and the reallocation of some of that. In my budget proposal, I had also done something similar where rather than authorizing the entire amount, I did a portion of just basically half of that and asking the county for half. But I do feel now that the, that there may not be an interest of the county to fund part of that. The county's still working through that process. They have not, I spoke with Commissioner Bushman today to see where they are in that process, since that is something that we have asked them. Counts, or Commissioner Bushman did say that while we did apply online, I know we had Mr. Kroll send in the application for that and, and some MSP funding, that the funding for the burn building was maybe submitted in such a manner that it shows up on the needs assessment and not as an actual ask. I know it was a very complex procedure to apply, so that's a clerical thing, I believe, on, maybe on our end and on the county's end. But regardless, I've made it very clear and had many conversations with Commissioner Bushman about the desire for the city to partner with the county on that. But in conversations I've had with Commissioner Bushman, I don't believe that that is necessarily a priority for the county, even if it were submitted in the manner that they prefer. So all that being said, I have a little concern that initially when I had said that I would prefer to partner with the county on that, and I think it's very viable because all their county fire districts could use it as well, that Mr. Bush, Commissioner Bushman said that the county fire districts have submitted some other needs that they have, like updated air packs and, and other things. So with that being said, I don't know if that changes anything because that's newer information that I've had within the last few days of talking with them and, and even today, that they have not made the decision. But I do not, unfortunately, I don't think it's favorable that they would partner with us on the burn building. And so I guess the question of staff too is that I know there's some money allocated in this for the viaduct. And I, I know it's been mentioned before that maybe sales tax could be used for the viaduct, and there may be other ways to fund the burn building as well. But storm water concerns me a little bit. I know that while there are a lot of storm water issues in the city, we have allocated a significant portion already for storm water out of ARPA. And then while storm water affects a lot of residences and affects us as a whole, as a city, whether our home is at the bottom of the hill or not, I also think that fire training, and I, I know we all agree that is, also affects every home, whether they have a fire or not. The training level for our firefighters is critical. So I just throw a lot of that out there to say, do we want to allocate for storm water when we may need it for the burn building? And I know, I, I guess the question is that can some of that come out of sales tax instead and then still accomplish what Councilman Spencer is trying to accomplish? And still get the burn building more funded if needed. And if not needed, after we hear from the county, can be adjusted at that time. Mr. Kroll.
So my answer would be yes, we can take some of that out of sales tax if that's what the county, uh, the city wants to do. Recall, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we typically go through after budget, go through and do what we call gleaning. We close out projects in the prior year, sales tax, which would be G. I don't know if we have an estimate of what that amount is. I don't know what that amount is right now. But as we close some of those projects out, there's some of that either leftover sales tax money or additional revenue that came in above the estimate. So there's certainly an amount there. I'm hesitant to say a number because I don't know what that is, but there's that sales tax money as well. So the answer is yes.
Councilman Spencer?
And, and I'm all for fulfilling that, that exercise when the appropriate time is. But I think what I'm, what we as a council, and I, I think I can speak for Public Works Committee, is that we're trying to address a need, a critical need, that quite frankly, that project changed complexity with, when we had a, a failure with a section of, of a decking that, that fell in a Wares Creek. And, you know, so if we can upfront some initial cost with ARPA funds, that extends the, the maximum potential that we can utilize for capital improvement sales tax down the road. So I, I really think this is, is, this is a good approach. You know, the other piece I wanted to speak on is the hundred thousand dollars to the demolition program. In my, in my view, and it, you know, we still have the exercise of, of going through the budget for FY twenty-three, but that's a phase one. I'm hoping that maybe we can develop a program, a process to where that division that utilizes the abatement process and they recoup a, a significant amount of dollars back to, to the favor of, of our budget. They do a very good job in that and, and thank you for doing that. Hopefully, we can develop a program to where those funds kind of stay in that designated fund line. And then, you know, instead of always having to come back and, and, and address that issue. You know, if there, if there's, if there's dollars left over from, I would assume would be capital improvement sales tax, you know, we can, we can have that discussion. I, I don't think we could really fund anything out of the public safety sales tax at this point for the burn building. So I would not be a supporter of that. So I'm just wanting to make sure we have clarification of that's what we were talking about as far as the gleaning process for, for any capital improvement sales tax dollars in projects. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I was thinking capital improvements for the other items, not for the, uh, public safety tax for the burn building. And I guess I'm just trying to figure out, I, I don't want to jeopardize the potential for the burn building to get funded, as we know that's been a council priority for so many years. And I don't know the three hundred, two hundred, and a thousand, so the six hundred thousand that you've proposed to change, if it's worth holding off on that portion, maybe until we know a little bit more about all of those projects. We're working on the engineering now for the viaduct, looking at specific storm water projects, looking at specific demolition and knowing more about that and the burn building, just gathering more information before we take all of that away from the burn building for sure.
I think not, just for the sole purpose of, we're trying to get that million dollar threshold. We already allocated seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Pulling three hundred thousand gets us, gets us that million dollars. And again, there's these other two programs that I think are critical. I am very supportive. I, I, I hope, you know, I'm not conveying that I'm not supportive of the burn building. I'm, I'm a very strong advocate of the burn building. We do have some stopgap measures in place. They're not long-term solutions by any means. But I think a million dollars of initial funding, I think sends a message to not only the public, but to our firefighters personnel and department that, that we're, we're committed to your training. And I think me and the fire chief, as well as anybody, understand the importance of, of training in realistic environments and scenarios. So I think, you know, from a pink sheet item that's gone from five hundred thousand dollars to, you know, initially one point nine to one point six and now to a million, I think, I think is, I'm comfortable with that. So I'm comfortable proceeding on. Thank you.
Okay. I just know it's such an important item, so I want to make sure we don't give away to the other things. And I know seeing Kevin here in the audience, it reminds me too of the fact that we can't hold fire school here for the last several years, which is a, also an important event for the capital city, which now I believe is, I forget where they've moved to Columbia now. So those are things that we've also lost to, not in addition to our local training. Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, I, I do support Councilman Spencer and his proposal. You know, serving both on the Public Works and Public Safety Committee. I, I, I just hope that we, we do, had, did have to make some difficult decisions here. And we're going to be faced with a lot of difficult decisions in the future. I know for about six years, we have talked about the, the status of the, of the burn building at Hyde Park. And I just hope that when some of us are gone from the council in a few months, that the, the burn building isn't forgotten. Because the, the cost has gone up. We've seen it go up every year in the amount. So we need to get some, some hard figures as to exactly what it will cost. And we've got to realize that, that the, the training of our firefighters, so that they can have first-class training is absolutely paramount to the, not only their safety, but the safety of the community. So, you know, whatever we do, I will support this, this amendment for these other items because I, I know the importance of the High Street Viaduct and some of the other things mentioned. But we just don't want to forget this burn building. Don't let the money sit there and it just not do anything. That would be the worst-case scenario.
Thank you, Councilman. I guess my question would be how, how do we come up with the rest of that? Because that's pretty significant. So that's why I just thought holding off because that is so significant and I, I don't know what that answer is, and maybe other council members would have a better answer of how to fund the...
I think we're about to enter into our actual annual budget process where we will venture to answer that and a whole host of other very difficult questions, so.
And it is certainly very difficult. I know that what I'll be bringing to council is, is actually cutting a lot of things that I don't agree with, that I'm going to basically say, we should cut these things, but I don't advocate for them. And I know you all have seen kind of a sneak preview of that, so I guess I just want to make another push for making sure that, and I know that's what everybody wants to do, is make sure that we can fund the burn building. But, and I have not asked for chief's input in any, any of this discussion as you're listening in, and so I hope that you have a comfort level that, that this will get us where we need to be. But I don't want to put you on the spot, but just...
No, that's okay. And I, I really appreciate the conversation and I, and I really, I think most importantly, appreciate the commitment that I'm hearing from, from the council. And so I'm taking that as my charge is to engage my personnel to, to bring back to you some actionable information that it would include more of a scope needs, but also engineering and analysis for building, building designs and, and what that would look like. So that's what I'm understanding as my charge from here with there's initial commitment of funding and that I bring back to you the, the more actionable, specific numbers so that we can get this project off the ground and, and hopefully get it in service.
Thank you. We would appreciate that. Any other questions? So I know we have a motion and second for the amendment. So we'll do roll call or just, I guess, a voice vote on the amendment and then we'll take it up as amendment. All in favor of the amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll take up the bill as amended. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Deacon.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer. Ward. Weisman.
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty twenty-two thirty-nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY twenty-two budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds is outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll.
This bill would authorize one hundred thousand dollars of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funds for the United Capital City Soccer Complex Project.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward. Weisman.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Bill passes. Fourteen informal, there's nothing on that. Item fifteen, Resolutions twenty-two-two eleven.
A resolution suspending transit fixed route fares for a period not to exceed six months.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Uh, this item was brought to our attention via Councilman Deacon and, and, and the goal was to, I believe, suspend transit fares for a period of time. So we looked into that and we, we couldn't do it more than six months without affecting our overall system. So that's why it is at the six-month window, up to six months in this bill. Doesn't affect handewheels, rates, those would still be in play. And the estimated cost, if it were to be done for six months, is approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars in revenue. Be happy to answer any questions. There's also some comments in the packet from our Transit Committee.
Okay. And speaking of that, we do have the Chair of our Transit Committee, Angela Hirsch, so we may have you come up to the podium. But first, let's see if the, if council has any questions for Mr. Marash. Councilman Deacon?
Well, no questions. This is, um, it really got to be a lesson in convoluted government and politics. It was just a nice thing, I thought, to give to the city. No strings, no data collects, just gas was five dollars a gallon. They give us money for the capital improvements tax. They gave us money for the parks tax. They gave us money for the safety tax. This is their money we spend day after day. It's not our money. And I just thought it'd be nice. Yeah, we could maybe do something for them. The people that give us some money, give a little bit back to them. And it got to be so much, no, we can't do this. I, um, maybe, sometimes I can be a socialist. Maybe the, people didn't understand what I was saying. I'm, I'm a hard capitalist, but, you know, we could just be nice thing for the people. The most, the only comment I heard on the Transit Commission is one person said, well, the only people that would really benefit were the ones already riding it, so why do it? And I thought, huh? We always reward the people that come back and help you keep buying your products. So, you know, it's thirty thousand dollars, or if we could even do it for three months, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. And we throw around a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, a million, and it's not our money. It's their money. And I just thought it'd be nice that they, for once, we say, look, Jeff, people, we spend your money on all kinds of silly things. You're always upset on the things we don't spend it on. Here, you can have this. And it's not that much, but evidently there's so much pushback. I, I guess I was mistaken on how much altruistic the city really is.
Any other questions? And then we'll have a motion to, to approve. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the work that Councilman Deacon had, had done on this. I, I was surprised when it got pushed aside. And I know we got some feedback from our, our Transit Committee and, you know, I try to be responsive to what our committee's request of us. I know there was not a quorum at the first meeting. I don't, I don't know if there was a second meeting, but, you know, they indicated what their desires were. What I'd like to propose is, is an amendment and put a time-specific period in there of three months. And I know it's not going to be exactly, but what I was trying to do is get it through the end of this fiscal year. So do it three months and then it, you know, if it looks like it's working at the end of three months, we redo it for the, the length of time the councilman. But, you know, if there's pushback from us trying to do what the councilman indicated, which was reach out back to our committee or to our community, I, I was the same way. I mean, I thought it was a good opportunity if, you know, additional people wrote it, as Councilman Spencer asked, that we try to find out who they are and would they continue. But it was never a, if this doesn't work, this is a, a negative on our, our transit system. But we got some feedback, so, you know, my proposal is cut it in half, take it to the end of this fiscal year. And then I would hope the Transit Commission would give us some advice on how we're going to plug that million-dollar-plus hole as we move into the twenty-three budget. So this way we get, the community gets a little bit and, you know, we have the ability when we start the new year. If there's no interest in that, then we just let it go. So my proposal is to amend what's on the table, take it from up to six months to a hard date of four, three months to get us to, basically to the end of our fiscal year.
So there's a potential amendment. I know you said in the beginning of your comments, do it until the start of the fiscal year to see if it's working. So what is, what's the barometer to know if it's working? What do you mean?
If I said that, that is not what I intended.
Okay.
I'm saying, let's do it for three months. Take the tenor of what the, the councilman was trying to offer to the community. If we want it, you know, if people feel like it's working. I, I don't have any metrics of what's working, what's not, and maybe we just let it go. But the, you know, we're going to need some direction back from the Transit Commission on how we're going to plug that gap. Man, I know we can't do it all in fares. That's ridiculous to even think that, but...
Okay. And again, like you said, if we feel like... Okay, and again, like you said, if we feel like it's working, I just want them to have clear direction on what that means.
All right, let me be clear. Let's do it for three months, I don't care what we find out. I think it's good for our community, and on November 1st, we'll decide if we want to continue it for another three months. I'm not trying to get anything out of it, other than as the councilman, to do something positive for our community. So, don't talk to anybody, don't ask anybody, let's just do something good.
No, and you can, I didn't mean to, I just want to make sure it's a clear expectation, so that the transit, we mentioned the Transit Advisory Committee being charged with something a little bit. So I just want to make sure they know what, what they're expecting.
The pushback was that we had a gap, and we were giving a service away. And so, I'm saying that, okay, we'll, we'll fund it through this fiscal year, help us figure out how to, if, if that's truly the issue, then help us figure out how we're going to fund that gap moving forward, which are going to discuss, they're going to require some difficult discussions how we move forward. So my recommendation is move it to three months. You don't have to do anything, just say thank you to the community. November 1st, we'll decide what we want to do.
And it may be a great opportunity to gather feedback, so I'm not, I'm not trying to say any of that. I just want to make sure the expectation is known and clear. Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, and, and just echo, I, I concur with Councilman Fitzwater on the initial steps to, to maybe get something going in regard to Councilman Deacon's original proposal. I'm sorry that I kind of clouded that up with, 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 you know, trying to gather some information. So I, I would like to make sure I pull that component away from that, so that we don't burden city staff, and it doesn't complex the issue in any way. So, if, if that was a motion, I would, I would second that for further discussion.
Uh, Councilman Kimna?
Yeah, and I know when we first discussed this, you know, I initially said, you know, that there could be some validity to this, but we also had a marketing piece that we were talking about that went along with this, and I don't think there's been any more discussion with that. So I didn't know, like, how is that going to play in? If you make an amendment, and let's just, you know, ride the way for three months and see what happens, I, I'd still want to kind of know what, what the plan is to market this, and to try to encourage more ridership, because I feel like that's what the intent is.
No intent to encourage ridership, just to give back to the people that, it was $5 a gallon gasoline is what, what the impetus was.
Well, I mean...
And then, um, you can, the newspaper, and they can just put the, on the top of the bus, free rides. I mean, it'll get around. It's getting more convoluted again, how we advertise it, just, people that learn about free stuff. If it's good for them and it's free, they'll find it out. And if just the people that are riding it now, it's fine.
I would, I mean, I would prefer a better plan than that.
Well, it's just, it's not costing us anything, other than, if we get a plan, then we go back to pushing molasses. And it's old Saturday Night Live. Good ideas and bad policies, so...
Okay, okay.
Councilman Lester?
So, I attended the Transit Commission meeting, and, and there was vigorous conversation about, about this proposal, and, and it was, uh, I think unanimous that they were not in agreement to, to go forward with not having any fees for a period of time. I think we'd be better off to actually have some, some marketing and advertisement. Uh, I think the fares are a really good deal, especially with gas prices so high. Uh, and there is no marketing that's being done. So I mean, I, I would think we could even take a thousand or a couple of thousand dollars of opera fund and, and have a marketing plan developed and, and put out there and, and market our transit, because there is a really good, good deal for those community.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you very much. Yeah, it, it seems that there are a couple of different priorities or motivations held by, by folks on this, on this issue. So I, um, whether or not we decide to do the nice thing for members of our community for three months or six months, um, I think that the Public Transit Advisory Committee's memorandum to us that says, well, first of all, obviously, it says the committee does not recommend free fares at this time. But then, however, should it be decided to do so, the committee will not support any decision regarding "the need," quote-unquote, for public transit based on decrease or increase of ridership during such time being made. And I completely agree with, with that sentiment, especially if we're not actually going to be collecting or analyzing data. So, uh, whether or not we approve this for any particular length of time, I would hope that we, if we do move forward with it, do it in that, in that, in that vein, where we are not, in the future, attempting to shoehorn those results, however we might collect them into a, a perception regarding need for public transit. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your work on this, on amending the bill, and I appreciate your work on this, on, on re-proposing it. But at, at this time, we're heading right into budget season, and considering the budget constraints that we have right now, I just, I just don't think that I can support this bill. And I, and I think that we have to consider that as a whole with the budget, because if we're just throwing money at, at this, you know, there are so many things that we have to have in this city. And while I do appreciate that, you know, free ridership would be a great way to give back to our citizens, you know, we also need to give back to our citizens by keeping our roads fixed, by keeping our public safety safe, and, and doing so many other things with all of our departments. I, I just don't think this is an appropriate time to authorize this bill.
Any other discussion? And I do want to clarify, I, I hope that my comment about making clear deliverables for the committee has nothing to do with whether or not questionnaires or any of that's done. So I know Councilman Spencer said withdraw your thought about that. But I want to make clear, I, I'm indifferent on that. If, if that's something that you want to do now or anytime in the future, that's just as long as it's clear to the advisory committee, so they know what we, what our expectations are. I just want to make sure your committee knows what we expect from you. Because there may be some opportunities, and I agree, we need to gather information and use every opportunity. I know, Councilman Deacon, when you mentioned something to the effect that it, it's not going to cost us anything, but you're not talking about fares, because I know there would be a reduction, so that, that cost would still be, that's still in my budget. I have not taken that out. So, that would be for council to put on the parking lot and reduce that. Um, in fact, with the budget that you all haven't seen yet, with further things taken out of it, transit is something that I will be looking at a reduction as well, whether that's, whatever that may be, ways to, to even further reduce transit, which is something I don't recommend doing. But we'll be doing that in the next budget phase. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments on this. I'd like to withdraw my amendment, let the bill stand on its own. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, is there a motion, then, to approve Resolution 2022-11 as it's written? I think Councilman Deacon?
I make the motion for no longer than six months to suspend the fares for Jeff City Transit.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
No.
Lester?
No.
Schreiber?
No.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
No.
Deacon?
Aye.
Five noes, four ayes. Resolution fails.
Okay, and my apologies, I was going to have Angela come forward here, and I just realized that I didn't have you come up at all. I, I hope if council had a question, we would have asked you, but I, I know that we had your memo. Uh, but thank you for sitting through this meeting till the end to be here for it. Any questions for Angela before we excuse her? Uh, Councilman Spencer?
To take this opportunity, I, I know your committee's desire and commitment to, to enhance and/or maintain the levels of, of service that we're currently providing. So, um, you know, would look forward to any kind of recommendation of fare increases or, or not to come from the committee while we're entering in our budget process. I think that information would be vital to us as we prepare that. So, I would appreciate that. At your convenience, thank you.
I would agree, and I think even though it's a, more of a quarterly meeting agenda timeline, it might be better to have, and I know you met twice in the last month, but to have it more increased, so that we can get more feedback. I think, if anything, what Councilman Deacon and others have brought up is just the desire for looking at transit further, and so certainly, we look forward to that.
So I appreciate all the conversation, and yes, absolutely, we would be happy to look at any and all options. I would like to make a recommendation that the $39,000, $40,000 that would have been not collected had this passed. Does council consider utilizing that for some marketing for public transit? So that more people understand how it's utilized, the routes, and all of that. I also want to take this opportunity to challenge each and every one of you to change how you think about public transit in this community. There's a mindset that public transit is a social service, and it is not. It is a piece of the economic development engine that makes this community thrive. And if you do not see that, if you do not consider that, if you do not believe that, then this community is going to go backward rather than going forward. The things that I've heard discussed tonight, the options for the federal recovery money that is coming in are fantastic. But you're going to need people to provide services to make those things happen, particularly those things that involve tourism, that involve bringing people into the city. And I don't know if this council realizes that more than 70% of the Jefferson City workforce does not live in this community. But those that do live in this community, 90% of that workforce, are those service workers. And those are service workers who depend on public transit to get to their employment. And if that option is not available to them, you're going to lose your service industry. And then where are we? So I challenge you to think about the big picture when it comes to transit, and the impact that it has on this community, on our families, and, in all honesty, on our economic development. Because it is a huge piece of it, and you need to start thinking of it that way. Thank you, I appreciate this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hirsch. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Resolution 2022-17.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting the CDBG 2022 Action Plan and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the city has an overarching, five-year consolidated strategic plan that outlines what the goals of our entitlement CDBG program are, and that's approved by, by HUD and the city council. We have an annual action plan, which is basically identifying specific programs and the budget for these items, based on public input, public hearings, our, we, we basically followed our citizen participation plan, uh, and this is what we have come up with. It's not dramatically different than anything in the past, uh, few budgets, but we want to continue the down payment assistance for approximately 10 households, emergency repair assistance, uh, which, quite frankly, is something that normally is like a HVAC system in the wintertime or something like that, helps people remain in their houses. Infrastructure improvements, we work with Public Works and tag on to projects that qualify. And then also, um, when appropriate, we, we can perform a demolition or two during the year. Normally those have been for the benefit of, of property owners such as Habitat, to help them along with some of their builds. Um, we also recoup $58,000 in administration fees to actually do those plans and, and, um, uh, follow up on them, track them, and, and submit billing. And then we also get $15,000 a year roughly for program delivery. That is when staff is actually working with a client, with a customer, such as down payment assistance. Uh, we, we are able to charge at time, not to administration, but to the program delivery. Uh, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders, or a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Aye.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution 22-18.
A resolution authorizing change orders for Jefferson asphalt and Donaldson construction contracts in association with the 2022 street maintenance program.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, there's, these are two change orders. The Jefferson asphalt change order is approx, just under $200,000, and the Donaldson construction is just under $50,000, so approximately $250,000 in change orders to the street surface work. Uh, when we bid the work, are funds available? Were not enough to accommodate a couple streets in each of these programs. And then, uh, we've been talking about that at the Public Works and Planning Committee meeting, and the, I believe it's Bill 37, had some funds in it for infrastructure, and that would be our intent to pay for this, these change orders out of that, since it did pass.
Any questions for Mr. Marash, or a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. I don't see anyone signed up. Is there anyone here or online that would like to speak? Okay, item 17, is there any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 18, any new business? Councilman Spencer?
Um, I think as discussed in our Public Works Committee meeting, have we learned anything on the bird scooters about how we, if the council will entertain terminating the contract, or... Uh, here's a little additional information. Sunday evening, uh, 9:00 on Missouri Boulevard, we was heading west. There were two bird cycles on Missouri Boulevard, side by side. A car was coming at a pretty high rate of speed, almost rear-ended two individuals on those scooters. Um, I, I think we are averting disaster here, or at least some significant injury. Um, so, again, that was a program that I had high hopes for. Um, it is one of the biggest regrets that I have on, sitting on council of approving that, and just got a lot of buyer's remorse, quite frankly, so...
Yeah, uh, excuse me, um, we're planning on having that for, uh, for discussion at the next planning and public work, so I don't have it ready for you now, but that, that was the plan.
No, no problem, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Is that something too, that if there would be any related either police reports or issues or anything, knowing if, what kind of issues there are in the community? And I've also had a lot of people who've actually said they liked them and were very happy with the service and having them. So, again, there's, I guess there's all different sides to that. So is that something that PD would be able to supply to help make that decision?
I don't know that we're tracking enforcement specifically on bird scooters themselves. We don't have a, a mechanism to do that. I would have to poll the employees to see what kind of run-ins they've had. I mean, it essentially falls under the motorized bicycle ordinance, and I could track those tickets if we've given, given any. But, um, I can tell you personally, I've pulled over and just told people to ride safely and ride in the same area, and that doesn't make our statistical gathering process at all. So, I don't know that I would have the data that you're looking for.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Um, item 19, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. The Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following. I, item I is hiring, firing, promotion, or discipline of particular employees, Section 610.0213, or item II, individually identifiable personal records, Section 610.02113. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward? Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will take a three-minute break, and then closed session will be back in this room. So, thank you, everybody.